Right, we're on to item 24 councillors, notice of motion on Falden Mar. Now councillor Hawkins, I understand this is your motion.
Yes, thank you your worship, and I'd like to move an amendment to it per 26.4 in standing orders. Amendments can only be made to a notice of motion before they are seconded at the meeting. So I'd like to, and it needs to be done with the permission of the meeting, so if the meeting will allow it, I'd like to amend a third clause to the resolution asking for an options paper with urgency outlining, who to guess at options, for giving effect to parts A and B, and if you could edit the repetition out of that phrase, England, that would be good. But yeah, it's basically just a next steps point, but it needs to be accepted.
Can I take some guidance here? Is this, Sandy and Sharon, a procedural motion in which case it just needs a second for the amendment and then a vote? Or is it a substantive? I don't want to get this done wrong and then have to redo it, done enough of that. I'm asking if this motion to amend the notice of motion is a procedural motion or not, in which case there would be no speaking rights, but if it isn't a procedural motion, there will be speaking rights to it. So I need to clarify that before we go any further. So I understand that I've been given discretion on this, always a weighty thing. So councillor, I'm going to treat this as a procedural motion, we're still going to go to the vote, and we will have the full discussion allowed on the other one. So your move, can you just repeat what you're moving by way of amendment so that everyone around the table knows what the amendment is?
Yeah, thank you, I'm moving the first two clauses of this, the amendment also that, oh sorry, yes, we're voting on the amendment. The amendment is that council requests a paper with urgency outlining options for giving effect to this, this being the notified.
So it's a consequential point of order?
The standing order that relates directly to it is 26.4, which makes it clear.
If I may, that makes that part clear, but whether or not the amendment to a notice of motion is itself procedural isn't covered in the way that we can find, without poring through the standing orders now. Standing orders do allow however the mayor our discretion if the standing orders are inconclusive or not able to adequately deal with the matter, and that's what we've advised the mayor.
And further Sandy, does this amendment need a second? Well, it was...
My strict reading of 26.4, and given that this is on the fly, is that I would take that as read. Only the mover, with the agreement of a majority of those present at a meeting, may offer a notice of motion.
Okay, so are you all aware of what councillor Hawkins is proposing to add to his notice of motion? And I'm going to put it to the vote, all those in favour of allowing that, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried, thank you. Right, now you'll be seeking a second to the now amended motion. Councillor Lafisa, thank you, so can I now, now. This is a notice of motion brought by a member, it's not brought, it doesn't accompany a report. So under standing orders 20.3 during debate, members can ask staff questions about the matters being discussed. So just to be clear, if you stand to speak, ask your questions at the same time and speak at the same time. Is everyone comfortable with that? So that we're all of the same understanding of what, how we're doing it. Councillor Vandervass?
I'd be much more comfortable if we could stick with the normal situation where questions are asked first and then we get to speak in debate, because quite often questions that come up and get answers to them may actually change the way in which you want the debate or even to vote. So dealing with questions first and then having debate is certainly my preferred way of doing things, as we normally have.
Okay.
I don't know who the questions would be directed to, given that it's my motion, and I don't think staff can speak on behalf of it. And so to save everyone the time, people can raise questions during the course of the debate and I can answer them during the write of reply, as per the general practice.
Is everyone comfortable? Look, I think councillor Vandervass has made a reasonable point, and for the sake of clarity, I'll invite people. You're quite right councillor Hawkins, the questions will be of you, but if someone spoke early and asked a question, a subsequent question may prompt another one and they wouldn't have another chance to speak. So councillor Vandervass?
As an example of a question that would be of staff, given that a report is being asked for with urgency, a question for instance might be of the chief executive.
I hope you're not trying to talk me out of this, I'm on your side. You just, I get it, would you just sit down and we'll get on with it.
All right.
So, no, look, I'm not going to have a discussion about this. So here's how we're going to do it, we're going to have questions of the mover or of staff through me at the beginning, as we normally do, I think that's clearer, and then that doesn't create timing issues for later. So questions please, councillor O'Malley and then councillor Wylie.
Through you mister chair to councillor Hawkins, the word support, does that mean give emotional support to or financial support to?
As I indicated at the beginning, people are happy to ask questions during debate and I'll answer any questions raised during my write of reply.
I think it would be more helpful...
It'd be kind of helpful to understand whether there's a cheque involved.
Hang on, I think it'd be, in order for, I think it would be more helpful if you could answer them as we go, councillor.
Well, in this case, the question is answered by the amendment just passed. So the options will be presented and the options will have implications and we will decide what we progress and what that means, should this get supported this meeting. So B is modified or explained by C if you like, which is why I added the amended clause.
Councillor Wylie?
Thank you your worship, a question for the CEO around staff timing and the ability to urgency outline the options for giving effect to this motion.
Answering that on the fly is nearly impossible. What I am aware though is that there has already been some work on 2GP, outstanding natural landscape features, Falden Mar. So there are a couple of emails that have done the rounds because this has been thought at by the planning team. So this is in Sandy's area, she'll go back and talk to her team about their ability to pull this together reasonably quickly and then we'll liaise through to the chair of the committee that that paper would go to, which is as per standing orders.
A question, I'm not sure whether for councillor Hawkins or for the mayor or the CEO, to the effect of how does this, is this going to be relayed through to the overseas investment office? What happens to the next steps?
Just regarding the overseas investment office, so as you're aware, the letter that was sent from the mayor and the letter from Clutha with my signature on it as well, have been set aside. So they now have no impact, they are effectively, is effectively put to one side and are not considered as the OIO. So I don't, yeah, so the OIO regard us effectively now as mute on the subject.
It does seem to me that if it were council's will and a decision is made here, council could inform OIO of what its decision is around this, there's nothing to stop council doing that. It would be council, not me individually or the chief executive, it would be council.
Also clarification of process, that council, RMA hearings, things like that. So this might be directed to councillor Wilson or to staff, okay, to mister Graham. Say the overseas investment office approves the purchase, we go then into an RMA process. How would that then be handled? Is that what would take place?
My understanding is we've already made it public that we would be almost certainly appointing independent commissioners.
I understand that, yeah.
That is correct, should we receive an application, then we will follow our standard processes. But given the situation we're in and the skills that we will need for an application of the sort that will be heard by independent commissioners.
Following with the process of this item, I will speak to it now, I will be supporting this motion. I had a number...
Hang on, sorry.
There was still a question, I thought we were going to...
You might have misunderstood me, I'm sorry I didn't explain it well enough. We, I'm allowing questions now on their own, so councillor Vandervass?
If we were to make some kind of recommendation or support and staff were to draw up a report in that regard, would we be given that this resource is entirely privately owned? It's not crown land, it's not DCC land. If we make some kind of recommendation as the local city council, do we compromise ourselves, this is through the chief executive, sorry, through the chair, to the chief executive, do we compromise ourselves in the possibility of granting resource consents in the future? And do we possibly open ourselves up to legal action for essentially trying to affect the ownership rights of the owners of this resource?
I'll pass that to Sandy as the senior in planning legal mind.
I sense that is something we would need to consider, I can't give an answer to that, I'm sorry, on the fly. It would need some consideration.
But I can say that that would be one of the intentions of appointing an independent commissioner.
Right, so those things would be considered before some letter was sent? You'd look at the legal and the consent implications of that, fine, absolutely.
Councillor Wilson?
Thank you your worship, a question for the CEO I think, but just wondering the implications of your, or staff time to do three? Would that also involve in your mind talking to government? And there are some interests there, I know I've read the, an interesting paper from the chief scientist for the prime minister, I think it's her title, I can't remember, and their ability to get involved. Is that the sort of thing that you would be considering as well, or would you be...
Well, I haven't long since seen that this was coming, but my immediate assessment is that it was covering potential changes we might discuss with regard to an amendment to the district plan that would give that kind of preservation and protection, as well as potentially thoughts about costs of a financial purchasing. So I was imagining the more direct things that this council might consider doing, but...
Thank you. And I just want to, it's a high bar setting, starting this process as far as setting precedent around the table. And I'm just reflecting on the only time I can imagine, I can remember anything like this happening before, and that was with Harbour Cone. And the process, is that a similar process, I'm just wanting confirmation really, we started on a similar process there, did we? At the behest of the community or?
Harbour Cone was pretty my time and we ended up buying it. And the other similar one is probably Saddle Hill, where we had disputed rights in that case for quarrying. We had some commentary about a desire to quarry it down to the ground and we had a strong local request to protect it. And the process we embarked on Saddle Hill was because we were unable to determine its value, because its value if it was able to mine to the ground was very high, but if its value if it was not was considerably lower. And so it became impossible for us to give you advice on if you wanted to buy it, how much you should offer. It was anywhere between a million dollars and 15 million dollars at that time. So we embarked on a process of trying to determine what the actual quarrying rights were. That's probably the only other one that I can think of. And as you're aware, that's finished with statement that it's existing use rights only and they're relatively limited and it can't be quarried to the ground, so.
Councillor O'Malley?
I just want to hammer that point in about our role in the RMA, because it won't matter if we send a letter, what we discussed today, in front of the council for the applicant, if what we discuss, it is clear, is it not, then that we can discuss today and because we're going to appoint commissioners and that will be all independent, we are not jeopardising our environment, let's say for an appeal in the environment court later.
That would be my understanding at the moment. The question councillor Vandervass asked was slightly different, that was around land ownership. And that's, I'm not, I can't give advice on that on the fly.
Okay, but you're clear on the RMA position.
On the RMA thing, yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary?
Your worship, if I may, could I answer councillor Wilson's question? Because I do have the history on that and I know it was before your time. So the Hereweka Harbour Cone one came from a community approach, it was actually Neville Pete and one other, to the community board identifying the opportunity, a little bit like this is, identifying the opportunity and asking us to advocate, as in the community board to advocate to council to purchase the property. And then that went through the normal council processes, I hope that's helpful.
I think the difference was that it was on the market.
Indeed, yeah.
At the time. Councillor Wilson, did you ever...
Just a point of clarification for those that aren't aware, as hearings chair, I would normally be, have the delegation. I have delegated that already to councillor Benson Pope, considering that some people may think I'm slightly conflicted living in the Straththry district. So it's councillor Benson Pope who I think is taking a very mute stand around the table at the moment because of that.
Can I just make a clarification if I might? That delegation will hold true provided an application is received at a point when councillor Wilson still has the ability to make that delegation. Now that may or may not be the case, given that we have yet to receive an application, just so that we are clear. So that it may not be a delegation that is exercised by councillor Benson Pope.
Are there any more questions? Councillor Lafisa?
Thank you your worship, I'm not sure who this question's for, I'm just wanting to know if we pass this motion, what happens to the letter? Is this, will that, the results of the motion will be conveyed to mister Plaquidis, the chief executive officer of Playman Global, who put in a letter prior to the council meeting?
Well, it would be polite to reply to the letter, I would think.
But also the council for Playman in the public gallery, so.
Okay, if there are no more questions, councillor Hawkins, do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do, your worship, thank you for the opportunity to do so and thank you to colleagues for the indulgence in the amendment. And a lot of the questions I think that have been asked of the wording of this are answered by the amendment in that these are all options, whether it's lobbying for OIO or whatever that could be presented when that paper comes back. But this discussion isn't about mining, this discussion is about what we value as a community. And I've been thinking a bit about the history of these similar kinds of campaigns and what it would look like had we raised Lake Manapori and what it would look like had we built an aluminium smelter at Aramoana and what it would look like if we'd opened up our national parks to mining as was proposed not that long ago. In all instances, examples of short term thinking at the expense of our most precious places. And what is at stake here at Falden Mar is as significant as that, if not more so. And we heard from, unequivocally from professor Lee, it was so long ago now, at the start of this meeting, exactly why, exactly why that is. And we need to work backwards from preserving what we value. And I think that's important in terms of the approach we take to these things. And it's become quite clear in recent weeks that this is something that our community feels very strongly about the preservation of. Because it's not just a priceless research opportunity, as has been pointed out to us, but one that has the potential to help us make sense of our changing climate and what that means in this part of the world. And I cannot think at this point in time of a single greater asset than a research site that helps us make sense of our changing climate. So this isn't about playment and any potential mining operation, it's about Falden Mar and preserving it. And I confess, along with many others, I'm sure, I was embarrassingly naive about the importance of this and the potential of this site. And I do wish that we had had the opportunity to discuss it through the second generation district plan review because that would have been a more sensible process. And I'm not, to be clear, I'm not proposing that a planning instrument or mechanism is the ideal solution before our colleague from the RMLA and the public gallery gets excited. It is just, it just presents us a range of options to give effect to this. And that will require, whatever that mechanism is, will require a degree of fairly robust and simultaneously sensitive conversations, not just with landowners and particularly adjacent landowners, but local communities and with iwi around how we can preserve and protect this in the most appropriate way. I'm not particularly interested in how valuable the resource is at the site in question, whether it's going to be dug up for pig food or dug up for rare earth minerals. I don't think that's, I don't think that's important here. And I don't think it's helpful for us to get sidelined by a discussion around any future proposal. After deafening silence in recent months, we've heard now that the prospective resource consent applicant is offering us world, quote world class consultation. But that's world class consultation about their proposal, which is inherently a conversation around compromising our values as a community in the wider economic interest. So I think it's important to get ahead of any future or proposed use in identifying the significance of this and then coming back with options for how we can preserve it. But I would just like to add finally that the preservation of Falden Mar and economic development on the Straththry are not mutually exclusive concepts. There is potential value, as has been pointed out through options like, you know, a UNESCO World Heritage Site, a geopark. It's handily located near the end of the Atago Central Rail Trail and increasingly busy a summer visitor attraction. So, so, I mean, all I'm saying is that there is potential beyond the research potential of this in terms of local economic development in preserving it in the manner that it has, in the manner that it has been suggested that we do. And if the conversation is around how we can better support as a council and as a city economic development opportunities in our outlying townships, and I think that's a very valid question to raise and a very real concern among some members in those communities, then let's have that conversation. But let's do it separate to this, which is about the preservation and protection of a significant 23 million year old fossil record in our district. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Gary?
Thank you your worship. When I listened to professor Lee yesterday, I learnt a great deal and I certainly didn't understand how significant this was. But what it did is it took me back to when I was five years old and our extended family had the lease on a limestone quarry. And regularly my father would bring home fossils. And I got very excited as a youngster, I can remember our whole class got to go there and see the fossils and situate, but that was being quarried for limestone. And of course there weren't the regulatory framework around that and the controls and the protection around it in those days. It's quite some time ago now. I got very excited about this and I got very excited a couple of weeks ago when the fossils were found quite by chance of the moa prints. And though it wasn't in exactly the same area, it wasn't all that far away. And I thought that was, that was a particularly significant find globally. What I got out of yesterday was that it cannot be sectioned off. The company can't say, look, we'll give you a percentage of this to protect the fossils. And from my experience as a child of seeing that limestone quarry, it was very evident to me that you couldn't just quarry part of the limestone quarry and protect the fossils because it doesn't work like that. And certainly professor Lee was very clear about that. We heard that it was globally significant as a research area and in global terms, in terms of the kinds of fossils that were being found. And we heard about the climate record, the unprecedented climate record. You couldn't but help as we were having the discussion yesterday and asking the questions and listening to professor Lee, there was a very active protest happening outside. And last Friday, when the young people marched. And what I got out of that and the link between the two is, they are looking for leadership. They're looking for leadership from this council and others. And the significance of that climate record and what we might do with that in terms of leadership in that sphere certainly resonated with me. So I think councillor Hawkins will bring this to our attention in the way he has. I look forward to the report and I'll certainly be supporting this.
Councillor Vandervass?
Very much approve of councillor Hawkins drawing our attention to what we value. He gave a number of examples of short term thinking that didn't lead to good results and thinking of our valued places, and I won't go through them again. But I do note all of those valued places that he gave as examples were either crown owned or they became crown owned. So what we have here in terms of value is not just the historic value, the value of a wonderful collection of fossils. There is the economic value of the resource, which may be pig feed and it may be quite something else. There is also the whether, we need to consider whether we value the rights of private ownership. This is not crown land, it's not our land. This is something which is privately owned, something that a private individual supposedly has rights to. If you own something privately and some council said, oh no, no, we think you should be doing something else with whatever it is you own, you might have good reason not to accept that the council actually had any right to suggest that you might do something else with what it is you privately own. So I think the value of private ownership is something which we must weigh up in any occasion in this case. The value of the deposit to industry is not something that is really compatible with preservation. Local economic development and preservation have been suggested in the same sentence by councillor Hawkins. But as I understand it, you can't preserve this resource and make a full economic development of it at the same time. You just can't. Now, the owners recognizing a lot of sensitivity and not liking adverse... Now, the owners, recognizing a lot of sensitivity and not liking adverse publicity, have suggested that they may excavate the whole site but along the way allow some access to some of the fossil record. And I think that in terms of actually getting to the bottom of this record, literally and physically and figuratively, that the only way you're ever going to find what is 100 and whatever metres down is actually to allow the thing to be mined. You can do core samples and you can get certain information for that, but you don't know what you're going to discover until you get well down it. No doubt, if it is mined, you will lose a very large proportion of the fossils, you will lose quite a lot of the historical record of it. But you will also gain the ability to actually see what is way down there, something which you won't get otherwise. The, there's, there's been a whole lot made of the significance of the climate record and how information that might be gleaned over years from preservation of this site may help the climate record. If you look at the core sampling of Antarctica in particular, where most of our long-term climate record accurate information has come from, you realise that actually most of that is fairly deep down. And again, it may be that mining it might not necessarily prevent this fundamental climate record being discovered. Also, the significance of learning about the climate record doesn't sit squarely with the claim that climate science is already a fact, that we know all we need to about climate science and that further information is not really required of the climate record. The climate record is actually fairly well established. And if you go to Wikipedia, for instance, and you put in ice age temperature, or you put in CO2 versus world temperature, or if you put in long-term world temperature, you will find that there's a wealth of the kind of information that makes me think that the significance of the climate record in this particular deposit is perhaps not really that significant. I think that the fossil record certainly is something which would be of enormous interest, and Professor Lee has, has made that quite clear. My hope would be that if we were to recognise the private ownership of this particular deposit and recognise that perhaps the best deal we can get in terms of preservation of the fossil record is to work with the owners and actually allow a much more careful than would be normal economic development of the resource. Thank you.
Councillor Alfie.
Thank you, your worship. I'd also like to thank councillor Hawkins for bringing this motion and acknowledge the core in terms of what we value. And for me, it's also whom we value. So I beg my colleagues' indulgence in returning to the former debate about the quarantine of email policy. I may have mixed up my words when I said that bullying is gendered violence and I said that it's perpetuated by women, I think, against men, and I meant the other way around. And for me, and for me, I, that connects for me to tangatfenua practices and beliefs where perhaps as tauiwi, as people who do not ancestrally belong to this place, we do not appreciate the very real dimensions of tangatfenua, for tangatfenua, when they say, the land is me and I am the land, and the river is me and I am the river. And so for me, while councillor Hawkins says it's not necessarily about mining, to me, it is about the commodification of land of our mother or of Maori people's mother. And so when I talk about the gendered violence that I, that I referred to in the previous debate, this mining to me is again violence against the earth mother. And so I just want to endorse, as colleagues have said, the passion and the commitment of the young people who are talking about climate emergencies and climate injustice or seeking of climate justice. And for me, that connects very much up with the moral and, for me, historic land rights of not individuals and not private owners, but also tangatfenua. Thank you.
Hey, I'm, I'm going to take the opportunity to speak to this now, because if we're going to continue to the end of this item, I may not be here at the end. And I may ask the deputy mayor to chair the rest of this item. So I just want to look at the context of this and the context that led to the letter of support that we sent to the OIO. Want to bear in mind that this area has been mined for quite some time, albeit on a very low level. And when the proposal from Plamen came to us, it was, it was just, this is going to be mined a bit more and it's got the potential to offer more jobs. And it was on that basis and on the basis of advice from staff that we gave the, that we gave the letter of support, which we've subsequently withdrawn. But since then, there's been a growing consciousness on the part of all of us. As Professor Lee said yesterday, it was, some of it was a revelation to her, and she'd been there for some time. So there was a growing revelation, not just of what the new proposal might do, but also of the value of the repository. As she did more, it became more and more clear to her. So there was a growing consciousness on the part of academia, on the part of us here at council, and on the part of the community. I had to have to say that I became, in learning about that, and then when the Goldman Sachs report was leaked, I became more sceptical about the assurances that we had been given around protection of the, of the fossil record. And I guess I've become more sceptical about its economic value at all, given that Professor Lee said she can't see any difference between this diatomite and any other, and other diatomites are pretty cheap. But I go back to councillor Hawkins' point. This is about value. And I reference councillor Vandevos' point that there's a value in private ownership. But in, in no circumstances is private ownership absolute. It is, you're almost always temporary. And the, the other example I would use is heritage buildings in many cases. We can own them, but we are constrained, if they are valued by the community, we are constrained with what we can do with them often. And we all support that. So I don't see that in principle, there's a difference between saying, look, this may be in private hands at the moment, but if the community puts a higher value on it, as we do with national parks or heritage buildings and a number of other things, then there are some things, it doesn't matter if you own it, we may compensate you, we might do a lot of things, but your, your ownership is, is not absolute. I also would like to just take issue with councillor Vandevos' conclusions about the ability to, to exploit this at the same time as preserving the fossil record. Professor Lee was adamant. It is, the two are incompatible. And she especially made the point that excavating would simply destroy anything and would not get you anything like the information and learning that you could get from a more careful scientific examination. So I'm supportive of this. And I, I note that it is, it's preliminary. This is asking for a report outlining the options to give effect to this. We might find out all sorts of things in, in that report. So I, I don't think that we should, I think, I think we, we owe it to ourselves to seek that report on the basis that we have been told by professional scientists and geologists who have experience in this, that this has incredible value. And it really, their, their expertise, in my view, outweighs that of anyone around this table. And I think we should, if we're going to make evidence-based decisions, we should be making them on the testimony of people who know what they're talking about. Now, Professor, you just about got promoted, councillor O'Malley. But councillor will do it in the meantime. I am, you're the next speaker, and then councillor Wilson, and I, and then councillor Lord, and I, sorry, but I'm going to have to leave and let the deputy mayor continue. Do it from there. Sorry?
See where I am.
Well, the alternative is during the debate.
That's the alternative, if you'd rather, and come back at one o'clock, and there's a few nodding heads to do this.
If there's a feeling, if there's a feeling around the council table that we can just hold this and then come back to it at one o'clock, it's more comfortable. Okay. So I'll move, I'll move that we adjourn the meeting until one o'clock. Second to councillor Staines, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against Kerry. Thank you for your... Right. Now, next speaker is councillor Wilson.
Councillor Wilson just about to do that. So yes, we'll reconvene the meeting. Does not, does need a resolution, does it? No.
No, thank you, Sandy. Councillor Wilson.
I appreciate the guidance, given some of the informal matters that have gone wrong this week. The, I've pre-read the letter from Plamen that we've all received, and I'm really comfortable to support this motion because I don't think they're inconsistent. I think with any process that is going to be coming up, the better informed the public and the community are, including the council, the better. I've really, I've angst about this because it's a site that's in the ground, which is very, very different when it comes to landscapes than something that seemed obvious at the time, like Saddle Hill or, and, or the Harbour Cone, Hereweka. The only analogy I can get to this, from the evidence that we got from the University of Atago yesterday and Professor Lee, and I recall thinking about this and the motion, when I was thinking about this before lunch, we're about to celebrate the University of Atago's 150th this weekend, and I think many of us are going to be participating in parts of the events. Their motto and their exhibition at the Atago Museum this week is Dare to Be Wise. And I'm asking all of us around this table to be dare to be wise and think of this as a library. This is a library, a collection of fossils, of things that we don't yet understand, we don't know what's in there. And we all know that one of the worst things that can ever happen in any society is burning a box or destructions of libraries. And I think, given the evidence that we got yesterday, I'm putting it right up there that that's the potential. Whether it is or not, we'll come out of this very motion and we'll be in a much better position to consider and have a much better framework for the community and for ourselves to make decisions going forward. And that is why I'm supporting this and I'm encouraging you all, dare to be wise.
Councillor Lord.
Yeah, when I read the motion, it says recognise the significance of the fossil record. And after what we heard yesterday, none of us can really disagree that there's a significant record. So I would say I do recognise that. Support its preservation and protection. And I think sometimes, how do you do that? And Professor Lee, I think I said that right, Professor, yeah, Professor Lee, she made, she made the comment that mining it exclusively leaves no trace and it's with huge damage and, and there's no way you can run that parallel with the studies she's doing. And I agree that that would sound the case on the thing. The, the one thing I haven't seen is I haven't seen a resource consent in yet. And I do realise what councillor Gary said earlier about the, you can't dig down to a lime pit, suddenly find a fossil and think, this is important and protect it. Yes, I can see the difficulty in that. Problem is, if it's 50 metres below the surface and you're not mining it, you don't know it's there either. So the other side of it, though, is, say, for example, that table was the, was the Ma, is not to say that you can't take 80% of it and leave 20% of it. And so we don't know what, until we see a, a resource management consent come through, what the proposal is. So I actually think you could actually potentially let the resource, I, I say, let the process take its place. This is a premature motion in my view. I'm not going to support it, but it doesn't mean I don't recognise it's significant. But we may actually get the best out of it by, you know, taking some of it or going through the process, letting independent commissioners hear the process and hear it to all, they'll hear Professor Lee and they'll hear others, and they'll find out the facts. And that's the bottom line, is we do not have the facts. We've heard one side of a story and we haven't heard the rest of it. So we don't even know for a fact that they do want to mine the whole thing. If they were going to mine the whole thing, yes, I could see that would be problematic. I also think if they were trying to do that, it'd be very unlikely that they would get consent for it. So the consenting process is the correct process to hear the information and apply some restrictions and to put conditions on. And perhaps that's where I think we should focus.
Councillor Staines.
Thank you, your worship. I will be voting in favour of these resolutions. And just following on from councillor Lord, I think the issue here is the OIO is going to decide whether to allow Plamen resources to purchase the additional land. I think it is part of our responsibility as a council that governs that area to make our views known. Because at the end of the day, if the OIO sells it to Plamen and then something comes along and stops them from mining it, they're the ones that have missed out. So I think that the right point to express our view is at the time that it's being considered by the OIO, such that if, if there is conditions there that they believe are ones which require this land to be protected, they can take that into account. So I think we should, we're the ones here today who can choose to get a report that will enable us to put a submission to OIO and to allow Plamen to know that we do not agree for the, to the mining of this area. And I asked the specific question of Professor Lee yesterday. Is this a situation where you could mine part of it and not then cause damage to the rest? And her answer was unequivocal, no, if you, if you start to mine it in a significant way, maybe say, take half of it away, so you've still got the full depth on a face, the damage done to the rest of it, once you've exposed that face and allow the change in the way the water is held in that, in that basin, risks the whole deposit. So I support the resolutions. Certainly, I think, before we make a final decision, we need to have better understanding, and I hope that that's what this paper will bring to us.
Councillor Wylie.
Thank you, your worship. I should be...
Oh, right, sorry.
With my stance on other issues around exploration and digging, I should be all fully voting against this, but I'm actually very much in support. I think the key reason being because it's recognised, support and request, and those are the key words for me, and it actually allows us to get more information. I can honestly say, in all the last five and a half years, of all the public forums, I found that to be at least one of my top three in what I learnt and informative. Who thought that 800 metres by 1,000 metres in the round of Middlemarch area was of any real significance?
I think that's abusive.
It's my opinion. But I think there is a process that they have to, that everybody has to go through, no matter what you want to do, whether it's buying the property, whether it's actually going through resource consent and getting all the required permissions. And I think that's basically what we're doing. We're trying to get more information for ourselves. And I would think that anybody that was actually wanting to proceed down a pathway would want to have clarification, clear clarification of potentially what barriers they may see. But I think I'm, yeah, I'm all support. Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
Bishop, I just want to also acknowledge Andrew Bossard and Shane Loder, who came and presented to us earlier on at the annual plan hearings, because I think many... and presented to us earlier on at the annual plan hearings because I think in many respects their presentation kind of kicked this off in some respects. Bottom line is, this is a fossil record of probably international significance. It's quite common in this kind of environment that you never completely dig the whole thing up because you don't know what techniques are coming down in the future and I think the professor indicated that. It's also obvious that if you are using heavy equipment, you'll only get stuff at the edges potentially luckily and everything else will get damaged. So there'll be massive loss of record if it gets mined. The need to go all the way to the bottom to demonstrate that you have used this resource properly is probably not, it's not, as you went through the dig, you would find out whether you wanted to go further or not or where you would leave it. This is very common in archaeology, that they don't dig a whole thing up at once because they're not too sure if their techniques are going to leave the record broken. So I think you need to treat it like an archaeological site and therefore of absolute international significance. Going forward, I hope that the paper takes into account that maybe the university might want to buy it rather than us. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Hawkins, you'll write a reply.
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't have much to add in response to that. I thank colleagues for their support on behalf of our community who have asked for it and councillor Gary in particular. It was remiss of me not to mention the recent discoveries in Kaiburn of the Moa footprints which sent the entire country into a media frenzy. You know, there was a sad irony, obviously, that same week we were talking about this proposal up in the Strath Tyree, which is probably far more, far more significant than that over a far longer period of time. I just wanted to touch on the, because the sanctity of private property rights has been raised and that's a philosophical view that some members may have, that the private property owner should be able to do anything that they like with their land. But that's not how our district is governed. Things that you can do with your land are set up in the district plan and that tells you what you can and can't do. And it's probably worth, for those of you who haven't bored yourselves by reading through the entirety of the second generation district plan decisions, and it's a wise move, it's probably worth noting for colleagues that under the decisions version of the 2GP, Foden Mar sits within what's called an outstanding natural landscape area, which sets a very high bar as to what can and can't be undertaken on that land. For example, mining as an activity has to be done in such a way that its impacts on the landscape are insignificant, which is clearly not what has been talked about for this, which isn't to say they can't apply for consent to get past that, but that is what is anticipated by the 2GP is that any mining on the site would have an insignificant impact on the landscape. And I think that's epic when we talk about how restrictive we're being around private property rights and what any kind of land value or compensation or whatever would have to look like to recompense people for any preservation or protection of the fossil record here. But other than that, I look forward to seeing what the options are sooner rather than later around what we, you know, the full, not just planning options, but the full scope of what we can do to give effect to this. And I think, thanks for the broad political support that I anticipated, I appreciate it.
What I'm going to put in, I think we'll take it by division then, thank you. Clearer.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Elder.
Aye.
Councillor Gary.
Aye.
Councillor Hall.
Aye.
Councillor Hawkins.
Aye.
Councillor Lefiso.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Councillor Newell.
Yes.
Councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Vandevos.
No.
Councillor Wiley.
Yes.
Councillor Wilson.
Yes.
Your Worship.
Yes.
Carried 11-2 with one abstention.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 25, the New Zealand Master Games service level agreements. You're sitting back, that's councillor Newell, sitting back.
Yes.
Welcome. Do you wish to introduce this or do you want to go straight to questions?
Straight to questions.
Right. Questions, councillors, no need for an introduction, does anyone have any questions? Councillor Wilson.
In the last few months and especially yesterday, we've been asked increasingly about climate change and the effects of a lack of action on our part in some ways to have clear policy on fixing some of the issues of climate change. Now, transport is a substantial part of the Masters Games and getting people here, as it is with a whole lot of other things like cruise ships and the like. And the question I have for you is the sustainability lens that we lean to something like this and consider a, whether it's mitigation or tree planting or whatever, and for an event like this, and whether that would be giving voice to some of the things that we hear, so that when you encourage people to fly here, you also encourage them to buy a tree for an arboretum on Signal Hill, for example, just something that's been going across my desk recently, but those sort of things. Have you considered that and would you be able to consider that?
We have not discussed that with the Masters Games board and we have not discussed that in-house at this time. It may be worth noting, although it's still a transport, it still relates to carbon, that over 80% of people actually come from the Otago Southend and close Canterbury area. So the number that fly in is minimal compared to say some of the other concerts and other sporting events held, but that doesn't mean that should be ignored. We haven't discussed it, we can raise it with the Masters Games board however.
Thank you and I do appreciate that you're the first one off the rank to ask this question of, which is probably really unfortunate of me. Thank you.
Other questions? Move, any other questions? Is there a second to councillor Hall? Councillor Wiley, do you wish to speak to it? Any other speakers? There being none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Okay, that's the, that's quick, wasn't it?
Mistake.
Oh, yes. So I'll move that the meeting move into confidential for the reasons outlined in the agenda and under the provisions of the local government official information and meetings act. Second to councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Now, I think we'll just give the team some time because they're actually going to be setting up in the Edinburgh room, so this is a perfect opportunity to take some minutes.